Don't do it anymore. I don't know tonight. We see everybody.
All right, welcome back. We had an executive session from the person discussing retaining of an executive search firm. Also, the appointment of an interim county administrator. No action was taken in the executive session. I'll now entertain any votes on the group.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we authorize the HR director to enter into an agreement with fine great people for the county administrative search. And further authorize the clerk of counsel to his liaison when the search firm in the county council.
There's a motion as our say.
Right there.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. There are the motions to even.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Melissa Kirkland as the interim county administrator of Lawrence County effective on May the nineteenth.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Six to zero to one, Councilman Brownlee in abstention. No other business to be handled at this time. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand? Seven zero, me and adjourn. Thirty seconds. Good evening and welcome to our regular May twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting of county council. Sure, I have my right agenda in front of me. I will have our invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll go into our meeting. Here, we thank you for the beauty of this day. We thank you for the rain that you've given us. We thank you for the safety and the travels that we've had today to get here. But we ask that everything that we discuss, all the decisions we make, all the things that we do for this county be in your will, uplift your kingdom, and to do the things that we should for this group of citizens here tonight, and for those that we call family in Lawrence County. But we ask you forgive us where we fail you. We ask that everything tonight be what's good for Lawrence County in the name of prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
The next item up is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes. One is for the April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five regular session. The other is the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five special call meeting. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion approved, agent O C. And agent. One second.
We have a motion to approve April fourteenth and twenty-second meeting minutes. Is there a second? Got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes? Seven zero. I accidentally switched right over. Number two, approval of the agenda. So with that being said, appreciate the minutes approval. We need a motion to approve our agenda. Got a motion that I got any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda? With your right hand, seven zero. Thank you so much. We have a few special recognitions this evening. We always get a it's it is a pleasure and opportunity we have every month to try and recognize things that are happening in our community. We have three tonight on your agenda. We had two listed, which was a building safety month in the EMS week, but it's also police week. And so we did not like in can't miss anything. We just got didn't get it on the agenda before or time, but if you would indulge me, I would like to recognize first National Police Week. On behalf of the council of Lawrence County is with deep pride that we, the Lawrence County Council, do hear proclaimed with extreme honor the week of May eleventh through seventeenth as National Police Week. National Police Week is to recognize and honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities. And there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in the communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Lawrence County Sheriff's Office, Lawrence Police Department, and the City of Clinton Police Department. And whereas members of law enforcement have earned the appreciation and respect of the people of this great state for merit, dignity, courage, and reliability they exhibit every day, we must also honor the sacrifices made by our police officers' families who face constant concern as their loved ones work to protect us. Whereas South Carolina's fallen officers and their service to their respective communities will never be forgotten. By choosing to commit themselves to law enforcement, these brave individuals answered the call to service and willingly put their lives in jeopardy. We commend them for recognizing, we commend them for their service as a noble career and for protecting the public. We also recognize all those officers who are currently serving. Whereas the citizens of Lawrence County long term to members of law enforcement for assistance, support in times of distress, be it a personal crisis, a civil disorder, or a natural disaster, we in South Carolina are indeed blessed and grateful for this service. Therefore, be it proclaimed this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-five. Share. Also like to recognize on behalf of the county of Lawrence, South Carolina, with deep pride that we, the Lawrence County Council, do hear proclaimed with extreme honor the week of May eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty-five as EMS week. Whereas EMS is a vital public service. And whereas the members of the emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care for those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital care providers. The members of the emergency medical service team, whether career volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training, continuing education that enhance their life-saving skills. Whereas it's appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week be proclaimed on this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-five. Also, I will be remiss if I didn't say we have brand-new paramedics standing in front of us. They just graduated, so give them a big hand for.
On behalf of the county of Lawrence, South Carolina, is with deep pride that we, the Lawrence County Council, do hear proclaimed with extreme honor Building Safety Month. Whereas Lawrence County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in our everyday life and when disaster strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of our buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the building where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown dangers of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to the prosperity. And whereas game on, the theme for Building Safety Month, twenty twenty-five, encourages us all to get involved and raise awareness about building safely on personal, local, and a global scale. And each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider to commitment to improve building safety, resilience, technological investment at home and in the community. And to acknowledge the essential service provided for all of us, our local, state, and federal building, safety, and fire prevention departments, saving lives and property. Be it proclaimed on this twelfth day of May, twenty twenty-five.
Awesome. Thank you all so much. And we're at reports to council. What's your administrator? Public comment time this evening. We have three people signed up. The first is Robert Fleming.
It's I'm Robert Fleming. I'm the pastor of First Baptist Church of Cross Hill. And we was asked to come and share with something that we're trying to do in our area. You know, when Helene come through, everybody was caught off guard. And so our church became like an emergency center. We had had no power but through U-grills and whatnot. We fed, in nine days, we fed almost thirty-five hundred people. Just meals, people that didn't have anything to eat or anything. And so our goal now is, and we've shared this, and I'll be talking to the senator in the near future. But our goal is to build an emergency center and a family life center for our area because we also found out that there's nothing real close to us that can handle people to be able to have a warm place to sleep or a cool place to sleep and to feed them and shower and things like that. So in the near future, our church is looking into that. Of course, we're looking in a substantial amount of money, but we just wanted to share that. And hope say, you know, we'll be looking for grants or whatever. We're not asking for anything, mostly prayer. If anybody here wants to help with that, by all means, we're not going to turn down anybody. I've never seen anybody that would. And but, you know, that's our goal is to bring our community stronger, to help people to have a place for them, a place of refuge, to be able to handle this and get through things like this. And so we just wanted to share that we was asked to come and share and, you know, just be a prayer for us as we do this. And this way we'll have a central location for people to be able to come and be able to do things like that. So again, I want to thank for the opportunity and just pray as we attempt to build this center for anybody, it's not just for the church and the community, but all of Lawrence County, anybody that would come in that general area. And so I notice our our community really pulled together through this and and we overcome a lot of obstacles and, you know, and again, we want to be a little more prepared next time. Hopefully, there's not a next time, but I'd rather be prepared for it than not be prepared for it. So again, thanks for the opportunity to share.
Which church were you from?
First Baptist Church of Cross Hill.
I think they're to say. I will make sure you get some phone.
Thanks, sir. George Estes.
Hello, I'm George Estes. Matthew Brownlee is my representative. I hope I did was able to reach out to him about an issue that I think would help every elderly person in Lawrence County. I live within three miles of the Boyk Mill recycling site. But what I found out is they would not take my scrap metal. Anyway, eventually what I did is I went on to M and M. And it was mixed metal and they were they gave me just the basic price for the stuff. It was a few dollars. But basically, I was amazed at the amount of stuff that was there that was mixed. But like I say, there is no way that I could have dumped my metal in there. And what I'm recommending is for everybody Lawrence facilities or center here in the middle of the county, everything's around it. The main recycling center is towards the center of the county. But what I'm asking you to consider is to designate a bin at the dump sites. I don't know where the rest of them are. But let let us put that metal in those bins, whether it's tin tins, fencing posts, like I am. And to keep me from traveling so far to dispose of it. And there is a benefit for the county. It could be sold to M and M at a poor price. And just consider having this a bin where we can dump any kind of metal into it. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Mike Stagniello. Evening, council. Mike Stagniello, great core, isn't it? I've been speaking to this council over eight months now due to lack of training and safety within the volunteer fire system. And now, eight months later, situation is still status quo. We're going nowhere. But that being said, I have come to two conclusions. One being, the safety of our citizens is not a high priority of the council. I hope that's not true. And two, there is a major disconnect due to the lack of communication and transparency between this council and the volunteer fire system. Maybe it's time to update the policies and the contracts pertaining to how the volunteer system is operated as to have been updating other policies within the county legally. I also listened to the auditor last month. His presentation with the bow was very informative. But also, they will be very beneficial listening to him to have some of the wasted monies that I have found in the volunteer system, maybe to help find some of the other issues and problems within this county that are black. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item is all business. First item will be council submissions approval of appointments for county boards, commissions, and committees. First I have tonight is a request from the Upper Savannah Workforce Development Board. They're seeking support approval of their nomination of Dabbs Davis with the Lawrence County Chamber to be their representative, one of their new representatives on the workforce board. With the motions, there's a second, so any discussion? All those in favor of approving Dabbs Davis to the Upper Savannah Workforce Development Board, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Next item would be the Gateway Board appointment from District Two.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to appoint Steve Hudson to the Gateway Board. He currently works with the Department of Health and is a co-paramedic. I believe he'll be an excellent addition to the Gateway Board, especially with his knowledge in his daily work life. So I'm happy to appoint him to that board. Mr. Stephen Hudson.
Do we need a second coming from Councilman Brownlee?
No voter second is required. That point is made.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Ellis. You said no vote required, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. Next item is a public hearing for ordinance nine seventy-nine council rules. We will open this public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak to ordinance nine seventy-nine council rules, please come forward at this time. You might don't know what nice and deny mean. So this is, we're going to be at third reading of the county council rules of code of operations, rules of conduct, how we're going to conduct our meetings. We've been discussing this for the past three months or so, and we are at our third reading. This will be the opportunity for the public to have their say on the rules that we've been discussing over the past three months. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We're at item C, third reading of ordinance nine seventy-nine council rules of motion to approve on third reading.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, this, uh, can I make a motion to change the wording of this?
Hold on one second. We have a motion to approval on third reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Now, yes, sir. Discussion.
All right. And I'm talking to you about the phone page. Under E on public comments. Well, I'm sure of it is. As far as public comments go, if it does not list down the agenda, you can't make public comments, all right?
So in these draft rules that we're voting on, public comment is directed to items that are on the agenda, yes.
All right. What I would like to do, I mean, something may happen on Sunday where somebody feels like they need to say something on Monday. We've got thirty minutes. So we've got thirty minutes to public comments. We prioritize prioritize those that are speaking on items in the agenda, and if there's any time left, let somebody else say something. If not, your time to the agenda.
Sir. You making a motion?
If I was with me today, I'd like to make a motion. What I'm saying is those that got comments on items in the agenda.
Yes, sir.
They get first first chance. They get first chance to speak. If there's any time left in that allotted thirty minutes, if somebody else has got something they want to make a public comment on, it may be a pressing issue, it may not, but they have the opportunity to do it.
So I believe the way this reads currently is that at the beginning of the council meeting, much like what just happened today, there is a form, if you want to have speak at public comment time, that you would speak to that, and there will be a form that would be available at the front for them to list an agenda item they want to speak to, and they can speak to it.
But they may want to make public comment. It may not be in the agenda item. But I still feel like they are able to get up safely.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman. Information. I could be mistaken, but the rules as they currently read, it would it'd have to be an agenda item to speak on it.
Correct.
Okay. Well, I couldn't make a motion to address Councilman Yance's disconcerns.
We already have a motion on it.
Correct. Well, we're in discussion. We have a motion to approve on third reading. This is discussion time. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion?
I'm waiting, sir. I'm waiting. Yes, it won. You should be able to talk anytime, not toss it on the agenda.
Okay, I understand that there's not been an actual motion. Do you have an actual motion?
Sure thing, yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the rules of council, specifically subsection E. We can amend. We will amend the first sentence of that paragraph. It can read as, members of the public wishing to address the council on a matter will have an opportunity to register to speak. The purpose of the motion is to allow the public to address any issue to council and not just the items that are listed on the agenda. It's imperative we give folks a chance to speak.
I'm motioning in.
So you made a motion. Are you, let me, you've seconded that motion. Let me clarify. The entirety of of section E is set up to allow public comment on items that are on the agenda. And you were just wanting to strike, just to make a change to the first sentence?
Specifically. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, the first sentence under E says, members of the public wishing to address the council on a matter of county business. You know, right, that's what makes it have to be about the agenda items. We, you know, remove that. That can help us with that. Does that make sense, or?
So I will say, and I'm just going to read just for information, I will read the second paragraph two. Prior to council's consideration of any item of business on the agenda, members of the public registering to speak on any item of business listed on the agenda for that night's meeting will speak in the order in which the register accepts priority given to those that desire to speak on an item on the agenda. So what that does is anyone that signs up and speak and if there's time left, someone else could, but it references items on the agenda. So if you you change the first paragraph without changing the second, then it makes it's confusing and it's not correct.
For point of information, could our attorney provide clarity on that? On which, on if we need to address that second sentence as well with the first sentence?
On the nine seventy-nine.
Let me clarify.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I understand the motion correctly, or the intent of the motion, it is to eliminate the requirement that the item be listed on the agenda.
Correct.
Public comment. I do think that the revision proposed by Mr. Lane would do that because it strikes out of county business or speaks to anybody wishing to address council on a matter would be allowed to, so it wouldn't have to be just a matter of county business. But you probably would want to clarify that paragraph two to strike any references to comments about the agenda. So I think it would be further revision to paragraph two if you're wanting to honor the intent of the motion.
Any other discussion? There's a motion, I'll say.
What is the motion?
Motion is change.
Restate your letter, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. We can amend the first sentence of the first paragraph to read, members of the public wishing to address the council on a matter will have an opportunity to register to speak. Doesn't say county business or none of that. That would, that's a sure change.
If that's based on what you say, it's a
to clarify, this is the first sentence, and we were moving the sub- on a matter of county business.
Yeah, subsection E, yeah.
So now once, I would call him, say, I brought the section up three times now, once in a workshop and twice in regular session. I'm glad somebody finally agreed to want to change it, but the recommendation you made, a matter of county business, I think county business should remain. I think it's on the agenda items that needs to change because we don't, we don't need somebody here talking about city business.
Sure.
Necessarily. because we don't, we don't need somebody here talking about city business necessarily. Or other things. It does need to pertain to something we have involvement in, in my opinion, but I would be in strong agreement that we not limit it to agenda items only unless there was a plan to do something special like town halls or something in addition to regular county meetings.
Sure.
But your your recommendation would allow somebody to come in here, which we had a couple of meetings ago. It's funny, come complain about city business, which we don't necessarily need in our meetings.
So, so a simple word switch would would solve our issue there?
Keep it as county, not as long as county, and then then the person had to tell us they said it back into the city, I mean, from the city to the county. Like you say, keep the county.
I'm gonna say that this motion that's been taken in, we're discussing, is not clear yet. So point order, Mr. Attorney.
Are we able to amend this motion?
Yes, there hasn't been any final vote on it. It can be restated, amended.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we amend. Keep subsection E as is. Add add a subsection F under number two.
Point of order, that any amendment to the motion would have to be made by the president himself. So that would be in the motion, as we're still considering Mr. Lane's motion at the time, unless he wishes to amend it or restate it.
Point of clarification also, Mr. Attorney, can you read me the phrase in this section E that specifically says that members of the public can only speak on matters on the agenda?
Check is contained in the second paragraph, first sentence. Um, whereas this prior to council's consideration of any item of business listed on the agenda, members of the public registering to speak on any item of this business listed on the agenda for that night's council meeting will speak in an order in which they appear.
But to me, that doesn't limit it only to items on the agenda, or does it? I know that might have been the intent, but verbiage doesn't reflect that.
It it makes reference to the agenda twice in that sentence, which means that only comments to be allowed on items of business on the agenda. If you wish to change that, I think the easiest way to do it would be to strike the portion of the first sentence in the second paragraph um, where it says, prior to council's consideration of any item of business, uh, strike listed on the agenda, members of the public registering to speak on any item, and then again, strike of business listed on the agenda for that night's council meeting uh, will speak in the order in which they register. I would recommend keeping the remainder of that paragraph because it does set up the priorities that Mr. Yance was talking about. Um, but I think if the intent is to open it up for any item, the easiest way to do that would be to remove those those two parts of second paragraph.
That's because the part of that that makes it confusing if you continue to read was except that priority will be given to those persons indicating a desire to speak about an item on the agenda, which would imply there would be folks speaking on items that were not on the agenda. So give me a couple of phrases.
I agree, that could certainly be unclear.
You withdraw your motion, I'll make your motion.
Oh, yeah, we'll officially withdraw that previous uh, motion.
Mr. Wilson, he's just withdrawn his motion that you seconded.
All right, you ready?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna edit, make a motion to edit item E, second paragraph. Read, prior to council's consideration of any item of business, members of the public registering to speak on any item of business. And we're gonna strike the words that I'm not reading. Any item of business will speak in the order in which they register, except that priority will be given to those persons indicating a desire to speak about an item on the agenda, and further priority will be given to those persons indicating a desire to speak about an item on the agenda for final consideration. Chairman, may I make an additional time for speakers who have signed up before the meeting? So the words we were striking in the first sentence is, quote, listed on the agenda. And the second part of that sentence, quote, listed on the agenda for that night's council meeting. Those words will be stricken from section E. S, D, one, B, to the exact.
I'll second that motion.
I'm second. I'm being third.
So we have motion and second. Any discussion on it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Not only issue this, I feel like, you know, council meetings, we are here to accomplish, and we're here to accomplish the agenda of that force for that night. I do feel like sometimes public comments are not addressed as the way they should be, which is where my that my idea came in of having a totally separate meeting just for public comments so that we can address those issues. Just want to put that into everyone's mind as an option.
Yeah, the comments. I do agree, the intent of the document we have before us was to make the council meetings run according to the agenda and that an option to have another meeting for a forum for people to bring items around the agenda consistently is is the option that I would I would choose to go with. I think what this does essentially is take it back to where we are today. Is that essentially what it does?
That's correct. That would be that parameters for public comments.
Besides time limitations. So if we, there's motion and second, this is discussion. If we vote on this, we're essentially reverbing back public comment the way it is today.
Same thing, then we are.
Would be as is today.
In point of information, Mr. Chairman, we are keeping the county business portion of that section. Yes, that's the way it was set up before, is this, we address county business. If someone comes to something that doesn't pertain to the county, we tell them that this is not county business.
Mr. Matthew was saying about having a special meeting or what, explaining that, I mean.
My opinion, we have it at least once every ninety days, and that'd be a meeting set for for residents to come, voice their issues, and preferably for council to take actionable steps to solve this. Why now, you know, concerns are addressed on citizens, but council completing an agenda sometimes, some of those comments, I don't see ever come to fruition. So clarify, one more.
Any other discussion? I like.
The most you're gonna be late, then you're there.
Essentially, we are going to continue on the way they are today. You have any other comments, Mr. Wilson?
I like the two, like Matthew idea.
All right, so let me, let me just go ahead and prepare to tee you up for the vote. If you vote in favor of this motion, you're voting to keep it the way it is currently. If you vote against this motion, uh, in in absence of another motion, it will approve, will be back to approving the original document.
If this motion fails, if you vote no for this motion, then Mr. Brownlee can make a motion for what he wants to do.
Correct. So here we go. All those in favor of Mr. Patterson's motion to leave it as is, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four to three, Mr. Patterson, Lane, and Yance in opposition.
Point of, we're voting for it.
We voted for it.
Sorry.
Yeah, we were voting for it.
Oh, yeah, I apologize in this moment. There was. Yes.
Are we back to the main motion?
Yes.
We're back.
With no amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we include a subsection F below public comments. And that read as follows. As scheduled by the chairman, a county council will convene at least once every ninety days to hear from citizens, we could any matters of county business. Members of the public will have an opportunity to register to speak at the public input session. It will be called in the order they, in which they register. Presentations shall be limited to three minutes per person, not to exceed a six-minute period. Majority of council members present may vote to extend that time for presentations at a public input session. The sessions will be held in person with council members able to participate by remote means and live straight to the public.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I'm just over clear, this is a separate forum-style event, separate from county council meetings, just over clear?
That is correct. So this will be a special called meeting. I'm speaking correctly on that, and this will be just for public comment.
And you said at least every ninety days?
That gives us the, you know, we're required at least every ninety days and as needed, according to that time here. I think they could be every thirty days, every sixty, but at least ninety.
Only thing, you know, people could say something happens, like Mr. Kemp said on a Sunday. Um, turns out the the next town hall style forum isn't for another ninety days or another sixty days or however many. Um, you know, that's just what I'm thinking here.
I'll speak to that in as much as we all should be available to our citizens to hear their concerns, and we as council members and petition to have things put on the agenda and within the rules, any items on the agenda the public can speak to. So we haven't taken out that opportunity for the public to speak to agenda items, but we've also added forums at least once a quarter to get public comment that's not related to agenda items. As council members, we should be accountable to our constituents to be able to add things that are necessary.
And I also spoke with Ms. Noss, our clerk, and she said, also, for everybody that doesn't know, we have a new website live, LawrenceCountySC.gov. I've also spoke with her about getting our county phone numbers listed on there. Right now, it's just email addresses, but that is an option to make sure that we're as as available as we can be to our presence.
We got it up and going. We ain't got my pitch on there. I'll get yourself a pitch over there. Website. So high is up and going.
Obviously, work in progress.
I'd be working, we said no, but we'd be.
Yes. All right, Brett, if there's no other comment, we have motion and second.
All the comments, I appreciate you having me bringing this idea to the table. I'll do support it, obviously, I say. Uh, I also agree with Mr. Lane that we shouldn't be restricting our public comments to our citizens. I know I've advocated for that on multiple occasions at this point. Uh, but I do appreciate Mr. Brownlee's happy medium to hopefully address some of the concerns on both sides.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, you know, my mind keeps going back, if we do these county sanctioned forums, you know, uh, I don't know if you know what the financial impact of that would be, how much extra money we'll be spending of the counties to hold those? I don't really know. Um, but I will say, um, I've had two town halls this year, you know, on my own time, uh, on dime two. Uh, you know, there's nothing stopping all of counts, anybody from doing that. Uh, and, you know, I don't think we need to have a county sanctioned, you know, forum, uh, that's paid for by the county.
Well, that's all I got. Appreciate the information. Anything else? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of motion to add a section F, please raise your right hand. Uh, all those opposed to Mr. Yance and Mr. Lane in opposition, motion passes. Any other discussion on the third reading, council rules, ordinance nine seventy-nine?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend section B subsection I, item A, county administrator qualifications, and add at the end of the paragraph after we end with the last sentence, the administrator employed with regard to executive and administrative qualifications only and need not to be a resident of the county at the time of employment. I would like you to send it stated after that, upon the hiring of an administrator, they shall seek residency in Lawrence County within six months of employment.
Oh, you, what section are you on?
We're in section, page three, section B.
Why I gotta be, why I gotta be seen much?
Subsection I, item A.
So the motion is, state the motion again, please.
The motion is to amend section B subsection I, item A, and add a sentence at the end of that paragraph stating, upon the hiring of an administrator, they shall seek residency in Lawrence County within six months of employment. If not, already a resident.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and second. We'll now entertain discussion.
Just point of clarification for everybody, that this is, this is not. I know we will be on the search for an administrator soon. This still gives the opportunity for us to hire an administrator out of county if we please. This is just saying, once they're hired, they have six months to become a resident of Lawrence County.
Why had to be six months? If you hire them, they always have a job in ninety days. I mean, a place in ninety days.
Working in real estate, uh, that with this numerous occasions, I feel like six months is a reasonable amount of time for someone to.
So they can live a commodity, they'll come back and forth. They can live in, anyway, I mean, they got to live, they can live in Charleston, still got not media. That's all I got to say. You go get them six months, drive your kind of car back and forth.
Any other discussion?
Just for clarity, the concerns that Mr. Wilson has, that is just for six months, correct?
For six months.
Okay, just over clear.
For them to find time to buy a house if necessary.
And if you're going to have a robust search and have candidates who might not be in the area, it would be impossible for somebody to relocate probably in less than six months, period. And so the intent would then to be not to lose the opportunity to find the right person simply because of a residency requirement timeline. Any other discussion?
I mean, what I can't come, so the military taught me, you pack up and go.
Yes, sir.
I had, I packed up, made it to H and M.
All right, I appreciate that.
Only column would be, we normally address that in the administrator's contract. Let's find it in the ordinance, just gives it more weight. Um, now that I'm attached to it, if somebody lives in, say, somebody lives in the city of Alabama and a half a block over the county line, we're gonna make them move into Lawrence County?
We paying them, maybe?
Asking. I think that's something better addressed in the contract, but that's my personal opinion. I agree with the residence requirement, hey? But I think that should be addressed in a contract with an individual, not in a county ordinance.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Ms. Clark, Mr. Patterson, Mr. Wilson in opposition, four to three. Back to the original motion to approve on third reading for this nine seventy-nine council rule. As am. All those in favor of approving on third reading for this nine seventy-nine council rules, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six to one, Councilman Lane in opposition. Item D, public hearing for ordinance nine eighty, to amend ordinance eight eighty-eight, establishing an agriculture board. Public comment, now. Public hearing, apologies. All those wanting to speak to ordinance nine eighty, amending that eight eighty-eight to establish an agriculture board, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Item E, third reading, ordinance nine eighty, amending ordinance eight eighty-eight to establish an agricultural board.
Motion to approve, second.
And motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Since other things I mentioned on multiple occasions didn't come up to a third reading, I'm gonna bring this up, but I will since we're here. Section eight of this ordinance, uh, nine eighty is to repeal section two B seven, ordinance eight eighty-eight. Verbiage is not written here, but that is the verbiage that outlines the uh, term limits for.
term limits for all of the boards and commissions that we govern. I make a motion to strike section eight from this, which will retain the term limits established in the ordinance eight eighty-eight.
Do you repeat that motion?
I make a motion to strike section eight from ordinance nine eighty, which will retain the original language for the term limits in ordinance eight eighty-eight.
There's a motion and a second. Can I get clarification from the county attorney that repealing, but removing section eight, which is the repeal of two B B I I ordinance eight eighty-eight, that it simply reverts back to the term limits?
That is correct. When eight eighty-eight was adopted for the first time, Lawrence County imposed term limits on its boards and volunteer boards and commissions. Second reading of ordinance nine eighty, the language was inserted to repeal that, and now we're looking to reinstate it again.
Reinstated, that would mean that there are none or there are terminal?
That there will be. If we strike section eight, then we are going back to imposing term limits on our volunteer boards and commissions.
And do we know what that is currently?
Let me read it.
Yes, please.
Section two B, all right, existing appointees may be reappointed on January first of the year following the expiration of their term. Provided, however, no appointee may serve more than two consecutive terms.
Same as the for the chairman and vice chairman for council that were just approved in the council.
As a point of affirmation for council, you have current board members and commissioners who have been served for in excess of twenty years. Mainly on the library board, they would lose their seats if this was reviewed.
Knowing the difficulty we have with getting people that want to serve on boards and dedicate their time to it. I think the repeal of the term limits actually open up opportunities for us to find people who want to serve and that serve well and keep them in those positions. So if we vote on Mr. Patterson's motion, we would limit the term limits of people that exist on existing boards and many people would have to be removed. Replaced, not. Any other discussion?
It is difficult to find appointees to a lot of these boards. But thank you, my appointees. Boards that would remove a lot of them from that position. So I do plan to vote in opposition for this just for that reason, because I believe they're an asset to the boards that they serve on. I would like to continue to see them do that.
Where y'all put somebody on boat that I didn't want? So y'all raise y'all hand. So.
I will point out too, Mr. Brownlee, because there are some great people that serve on boards. It does not prevent them from serving on other boards. It prevents them from consecutively serving on the board. They're all just like yourself, the vice chairman, you're only allowed some so long to sit there.
Yes, I do think it has a good intent. I do like the intent of it, but I do agree with Mr. Brownlee. I will be voting against the motion for that reason. But I do like the intent. I don't think it's a bad idea.
My call for the vote. All those in favor of Mr. Patterson's motion to strike section eight, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? That is two, four, five against with Councilman Yance, Brownlee, Clark, Lane, and Carroll in opposition. We are back. At third reading of ordinance nine eighty to amend ordinance eight eighty-eight to establish an agricultural board. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Item, second reading, ordinance ninety-six, project armor below. Mr. Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry, I'm a little late. I have issues with the child. Um, project armor, twenty-three point two million dollar expansion project, creating twenty-four new jobs. I know there was some discussion last week about the multi-county park agreement. It is Hunter Industrial Park. I think the next item on the agenda addresses that. This project is a, is a great project. They're expanding their building, actually building another facility. And at the minimum investment that they're committing to, which usually is a lot more than what these companies commit to, their estimated below payments approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and that's going on property that's currently owned by the city of Lawrence, just during zero dollar.
Any question?
Oh, thank you, sir. Is, does that start the three hundred thousand at the first ten years? Is that after the thirty years?
No, that's year one. That's all. The way they work is that they're in a tax year in the rear. So once they start production, then that somebody goes and serves the next year.
So the city of Lawrence will get that for tax wise?
Uh, no, sir. It'll be shared just like regular tax revenue between the county and the city and the school.
But there's inside, you said the city only, the city of Lawrence only.
They all, well, the CPW and the city own the property together. They're selling the property, but it's just like a house in the city or anything else, the tax revenue split almost all of them.
Any other special?
I've been looking for you waiting on you. You ain't called yet.
Mr. Callan?
Yes, sir.
Will you go ahead, Mr. Chairman?
I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance nine eighty-six on second reading.
Motion to approve, second.
There's motion and second. Any other discussion?
Yes, uh, is there any additional supplemental information you could provide about the business, what it does or what's, any kind of additional? I know y'all are limited with what you can share, but.
I can't at the next meeting. That's okay. If there's only five businesses up there, so I told you.
You get house.
All those in favor of approving on second reading, ordinance nine eighty-six, project armor below, please raise your right hand. If first. Was it, were you in favor or was she like? Were you abstaining? Abstained. So it will be six, zero, one with Councilman Lane in abstention. Item G, second reading, ordinance nine eighty-seven to amend the Hunter Multi-County Industrial Park to include project armor. A motion to approve, some of those, and a motion. We have like a, we have motion and second. Any discussion? I will say this is the item that we had discussion on last meeting to ensure which park it was in, and it is in the Hunter Industrial Park. So that has been cleared. There's no other discussion. All those in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Item H, second reading of ordinance nine eighty-eight. An ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of not exceeding four million dollars aggregate principal amount of the general obligation bond Lawrence County for the purposes for which proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment and other matters related to. Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a discussion as a continuation of the bond we've been discussing for the purposes of the things of the sheriff's office. In attendance tonight is our bond counsel, Mr. Lawrence, appointment from Oaksway. He is here to answer any specific questions about the issuance that you may have, but again, this elevation of the conversation to be part of it.
Welcome and thanks for being here.
Thank you all for having me. So for the new members of council, when we issue, there are basically two separate ways to local governments borrow money. So when we talk about a bond, the idea there is it's just a fancy term for a loan. It makes the lawyer feel good about it, I think. But under the constitution, when you borrow money, there's basically two ways you can do it. You can issue debt secured by the full faith, credit and taxing power, which is a levy of the property taxes to secure the issuance of that debt, which is what this type of obligation would be. General obligation bond. The is a piece of debt secured by a tax levy on every piece of taxable property. Constitution restricts what you can borrow at any one time. Eight percent of the assessed value of property in Lawrence County. That number's about two hundred and sixty-four million dollars. That gives you roughly twenty-one million dollars worth of debt limit when you start working through the numbers. You have one series of outstanding bonds that have been voted by the voters, as everyone's aware of your CPSC program. And you have one series of bonds that currently counts against that debt limit. So you've got a current cushion of about eighteen million dollars that you could borrow at any one time. What we're proposing tonight is an authorization to allow up to four million dollars to be issued to do improvements to the tension facility, as well as some animal shelter facility improvements. And by moving forward with this ordinance, the plan would be designated to your new interim administrator to make the decision. Assuming third reading goes as planned with the public hearing, we would go out and solicit bids and we would select the low bid based on the interest rates that we otherwise receive, pay it off as quickly as we possibly can. I see you have your finance staff here as well to talk through any of the parameters around what that looks like. But historically, I've not put on the debt service knowledge. I don't know if that's a plan for this new issue or to not. I think that that may be what you do as well. But when you issue general obligation debt, the whole idea of it is, is that it's the strongest type of credit that you could potentially provide to a bondholder. Because you're effectively giving a lien on every piece of taxable property in Lawrence County. You know, as a governmental body, you can't put a mortgage on, on the county courthouse. You can't put a mortgage on this facility. So you're giving a promise of repayment from all the various sources that you can have. And so that ordinance that you've got in front of you tonight for second reading basically makes that promise. It recognizes the limitations on the very particular purposes for which you can spend the money. It allows for the tax levy as the ultimate security for the bonds. You can pay it from other sources, but at the end of the day, that's the recourse for the bondholders that you will put on tax of sufficient to be able to repay that debt over the time period necessary to repay that obligation. So that's kind of a really high level, kind of quick snapshot of how general obligation bonds work, but certainly answered any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
All right, what's put on my table today? We had four million dollars. Yes, no?
Yes, sir.
All right, out of that four million dollars, all you gonna give me is two million. How much money you giving up?
Will be a little bit more context.
How much money you gonna give out of that four million dollars?
I believe he's wondering if we borrow four million, what is the capacity we actually have to expand towards our projects?
Four million dollars.
Minus.
Minus whatever, whatever fees and costs, but otherwise the associated with getting the money.
And I think he's wanting to know, do we know with that amount?
There is a, a schedule that has been prepared by your financial advisor, which will provide that point to thirty.
So we get the whole four million dollars?
Less whatever closing costs and fees would be associated with that. So I would assume it's somewhere in the neighborhood of three point eight to three point nine million dollars. What roughly probably closer to three. And remember, this is a not exceeding amount. So depending on how you fit stuff in, and as we make determinations over the next several months, as you sharpen the pencil on what you actually need, you don't necessarily have to borrow all the way up to the four million dollar threshold. If bits came in and you only needed three million dollars, we would only borrow three million dollars. The way that the times on this work, by the time you give third reading to the ordinance, it'll sixty days statute for a way period for issuance. We likely wouldn't issue this debt, assuming the second, third reading goes as planned in June. You wouldn't actually really even issue the debt to August. So we've got some time between now and kind of the end of the summer to figure out exactly what those costs look like.
Thanks. Appreciate you coming tonight. I have a couple of questions. There were multiple numbers thrown around in the last meeting, one point seven. I think we heard from Sheriff and Chief Deputy, two point three, six, three was the final number they gave us, which then I can fluctuate, we know. But in exhibit C, there's a note to two point one million. I'm curious, now that's our fourth number that's different. I'm just curious what the
What page is that? Which page is?
See one. Is it good at C? That was the original draft. That should be strictly for purpose.
So what will that read?
It will, it'll have a, it'll have a catch in, we're saying, and a mint. We were, we were working back and forth with your financial advisor with numbers before the animal shelter facilities got put in place. It was a more finalized number. So this four million dollar threshold is the absolute cap of what you're at, otherwise all for us to borrow. And that number will get changed for purposes of purpose.
As, as Mr. Patterson stated, sorry.
You go ahead.
In the last meeting, we approved two point three, six, three million for the sheriff's office. Is there any issue? And I know you can't give us an exact number of, you know, costs associated with getting the bond, but there's no issue that we can't pay getting that money for the sheriff's office?
That, the authorization is limited to those particular folks. Those particular parameters are set forth in the ordinance. So do you see the terms, find the term project, talks about tension facilities? And then additionally, there was added authorization for the animal shelter disorder, which is an additional, which I think was that obviously this is the first time you've seen the body of the ordinance, but I don't think that was contemplated at the first reading, but it was added either of the staff.
So I, I realize that the four million dollar figure is out there not to exceed, and that's for legal purposes to get everything rolling. It's probably not required for the bond, but I would appreciate from staff if we could get a hard number before third and final reading. There's one here. But it would make, I think several of us up here feel a little better if we had that number instead of up to four million dollars. And that number's sixty percent higher than the actual needs. So I think that would, like I said, I recognize how it works on four, up to four millions in there, but I think we need a hard number by third reading.
And that will be provided by our, our administration to them. So I think that's good.
Yeah, I was told that either two million, we wouldn't get the whole, I mean, either four million, we wouldn't get the whole. But now you're saying we get the whole four million dollars.
Well, it's, it's a matter of.
I mean, up to four million.
Cannot get any money.
Three point eight.
Three point eight, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We good.
All right. So had this discussion. Is there a motion to approve on second reading, ordinance nine eighty-eight? Have a motion. Any more discussion? On second reading of course, nine eighty-eight. All those in favor of approving on second reading, please raise your right hand. All those in opposition, any abstention?
Do I have to abstain?
Six, zero, one with Councilman Brownlee in abstention. Thank you. New business. Item A, a council discussion on renaming of Ecom Fire Station. Director Lenny, you will come forward and explain this to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So tonight, what we're asking to do is with the loss of Michael Vincent, Mike Mike Vincent. He was full-time firefighter for Lawrence County Fire Service. He was part-time with Clinton, of course, council, where what happened. Why do you there? Why do you death was with the city of Clinton? However, him being full-time with us, it was also a tragic loss. The, the Ecom Fire Station, Mike Mike started there at age fifteen as an explorer. His uncle was also fire chief there for a number of years. His father was also the fire chief there for a number of years. It's where Mike Mike came up and when he turned eighteen, became a firefighter. And we talked to numerous past members of the Ecom Fire Department, the community, and no one is in opposition of doing this. We've done this before. We've got Kickler Station that's named after Tom Kickler when he passed away. And we're just asking to rename the Ecom Station in honor of Michael Vince.
What will the official name be called?
We're still working on that. I'm going to get members of the Ecom community and past members to help work on the sign, but it will still retain somewhere in that Ecom Fire Department, but it's going to be the, how worded Michael Vincent or Michael or Mike Mike Vincent. Station. And we'll bring it back to council beyond the city and all for the, the way that.
Mr. Matt, what action do you need?
If I used to have a council note to authorize the renaming of the Ecom Fire Station, that would be the action that I request from council. We've done it from resolution. Believe we need a vote here tonight.
I did not know Mike Mike personally, uh, but do know a lot of his family live close to the Ecom Station. So it'd be my privilege to make a motion that we authorize the naming of the Ecom Station after him.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Seven zero. Thank you, sir. Item B, approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve for our county extension agreement, uh, with Clemson Universe. Mr. Administrator.
Yes, sir. This is the agreement we enter into every year. Um, there's really not much to discuss beyond that. It's just.
Chairman, making motion to per resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, uh, for Clemson Extension Office, uh, Program Support Agreement and amount twenty-five thousand dollars. Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Point of inquiry, is that, just so we're clear, that is an annual twenty-five thousand that they always get? Is that?
That, that's correct.
Also in budget.
So y'all saying every year you're getting twenty-five thousand dollars and we gaining the Clemson building?
Any other discussion? All of, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Call question.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Six to one, Councilman Billson in opposition. And item C, approval of a fireworks prohibited zone. Mr. Matt.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, uh, the item that's been brought to council by Nancy Garrison. She has placed her property into a fireworks prohibited zone as allowed by state law. State law also authorizes county council to expand that fireworks prohibited zone. Uh, to include the center line of any road. And that is essentially what Ms. Garrison's requested, is that council authorize the extension of the fireworks prohibited zone to the center line of the road that immediately abuts her property.
There are motion to approve this request.
Okay, approved.
Second. A motion second. Any discussion?
I gotta, uh, unfavor this, but we made it for it. Just to be certain though, we have the authority to approve the center line of the state on DOT right away.
Statute refers to any street that immediately abuts the property.
Unlike Mr. Patterson, it belongs to the state. So how can we, y'all, that other would be of what called a banks in Clinton? You didn't want to let them do the right way to clean both sides of the highway. Now you want to give, now you, you said we couldn't vote for that right away. And they were going to clean both side. To put a sign. Now y'all want to go back now and, and, and the state own the highway.
So in statute, when you accomplish the things that Ms. Garrison has accomplished, you can request uh, to the center line of a, a road that adjoins the property and it's in statute. It's allowed by law.
Essentially, all they're gaining, I believe, is thirty-three feet from center line.
That's correct.
I'm just saying state on it, so it's, it shouldn't be in the state, go to the state for it.
One more point of order, um, Mr. Matt, on this form. It says name of subject property, if commercial, Garrison Farm LLC. All three of those tax properties are registered at the Garrison Arena LLC. So we probably need the sheriff's office to get a corrected form for that.
Would that essentially just be a scribbler's error and something to change that doesn't change the intent or the convenience of that?
Yeah, th- these forms are just filled out by the landowner and delivered to the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably just need to get it fixed for record.
All right, call the question. All those in, in favor of approving this, this request, please raise your right hand. Seven zero. Wow, thank you so much. All right, we're at county council comment. I will start with Mr. Lane.
Uh, y'all, I just want to tell y'all, I appreciate y'all for coming out. Um, don't stop, please keep coming. Uh, I didn't get to accomplish everything that I wanted to tonight, but, um, I'm proud of what we did accomplish. Um, but yeah, uh, it's an honor to serve these people up here. Um, uh, and yeah, uh, call me if you need anything.
Alfred Bill.
Now, my, what I say? Not on me.
Miss Clark.
Um, thank you everybody for coming out. Um, it's good to see everybody and also remind you that the land or don't afford tax, we just have a Thursday, six o'clock, it's where you go on, who asks you to come out? Y'all's question and concern.
Mr. Yance. Comment there, Mr. Patterson.
Yes, thank you. I just want to, uh, take a moment to tell Mr. Diggs, thank you for your service to this county. Um, you've, uh, treated it as your own. You've done things that others wouldn't. Um, you tolerated a lot of things that you couldn't have tolerated, but you've made this county a better place, much better place than you found it. Um, all of the things you've done, especially on Hurricane Helene, um, and just living in your office when your house is a mile in Appleway. Uh, spoke volumes to, uh, the, uh, sub here, but to the staff of this, uh, county who realized that you were in a trudge with them. Um, I could sit here and talk for hours, but I'll keep it short and say thank you. And also, Mr. Chairman, do allow me to, uh, yield my time while Mr. Diggs would like to say anything. I appreciate him having that opportunity.
I was actually going to do that after mine.
I'm good, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Brownlee.
Yes, Mr. Uh, Mr. Estes, Mr. Stagman, I want to thank y'all both for coming tonight. Uh, Mr. Estes, I believe I talked, when we talked on the phone, I can't remember if I mentioned it or not, and just for public knowledge, I believe the sheriff's office still has a bin out there, American Legion, is that right? Mr. Reynolds, Pearl and them cans, we'll take metal too. Uh, so that's located near the square. I get, you know, people out here in Taverton and other parts that can maybe farther away from that. Uh, that's definitely something that we could work on. Uh, glad we finally got finished with these council rules. I believe the last time this council got rules approved was nineteen seventy-six, I believe. Happy we got that done. I'm looking forward to these public comment sessions, you know, so we can all, all seven of us as a council take actionable steps to handle concerns of the community. Um, and it also establishes term on the chair and vice chair. So I believe we're off to a great start of finally getting those approved on third reading. Uh, we'll work on getting our contact info out. Anybody here wants my contact info, even if you're not a resident of District Two? I'm happy to give that to you. I always want to stay in contact and make sure residents' needs are taken care of. I agree. I've said that for the past three readings, but very excited that we finally got that through. Uh, and thank you very hard on my appointee. Come from a agricultural district, about ten thousand people, that is quite difficult to pick one person. Uh, but I know that they'll do great, uh, once selected. And lastly, just excited for the renaming of the Ecom Station. Um, I believe that'd be an excellent addition to that community. So I'd like to thank y'all. And lastly, I'd like to thank our EMS and Josh back, Josh Doctor right there. This is a couple of weeks ago, I got to attend the mass casualty event at the Sawmill. Uh, if you have not heard about it, I'd be glad to talk to you about it, or I'm sure Josh could. Uh, but an amazing experience for all the first responders involved, and I just want to thank your whole department for everything that y'all do.
I would echo all those comments. Um, we have an amazing team and amazing group of people that are running the county and the citizens that show up concerned about their county. And it's certainly a special. I hope that the things that we completed tonight will make, uh, it actually better. It may seem like it's a change, but it's a change on purpose for, for better, bettering the ability to us to hear your voice, take action to it and be, uh, have a meeting that follows, uh, rules that accomplish things quicker, hopefully. It, it's, it's a thing, right? I mean, these meetings are, are a lot, but I think they're important and we hear a lot of uh, discussion that's important, so I want to continue to do that. But I would like to personally thank the administrator for what he's done and his time here. I'd like him to be able to have some words for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council. Um, when I have a hard time speaking, I usually write something down so I don't get choked up or distracted, so bear with me. And thank you for yielding some time to me. Um, tonight is a very bittersweet moment for me. I've been in Lawrence County for almost a decade now. In that time, I've gained so much and I've also lost quite a bit. I want to thank this council for giving me a moment to reflect on some of those things. During my time at the city of Clinton and at Lawrence County, I managed to meet some amazing people from coworkers to citizens. Lawrence County has welcomed me like a family. We experienced many challenges, but Hurricane Helene was a pivotal moment for me, both professionally and personally. When I first arrived at the county, Sandy Kripchanks gave me a quote that to this day I still look at every single morning. It says, be decisive, right or wrong, make a decision. The road of life is paved with flat squirrels who couldn't make a decision. I look at that quote every day, or I looked at it every day during the hurricane, leaned on my faith and the lessons my father gave me to guide my decision-making during that time. To this day, I replay many of those decisions in my head. But I did the best I could for my team and the citizens of Lawrence County, and those decisions will linger and some haunt me for the rest of my life. Also lost my father and my brother during my time here, within about a year's time of each other. In that tough year of my life, the people of Lawrence County stepped up like I can never imagine. I've never seen a support system and a family as. There was not a day that went by that I was not checked on or called or, or just given a hug. It was an offer of dignity and grace that I'll forever be thankful for. I've made friends here that'll be with me for the rest of my life, friends that I've shared my darkest and brightest moments with. Friends that I absolutely love and actually trust my life with. Friends don't come around by happenstance or by fair weather, uh, when describing these friends. These friends are stuck by my side and I know they'll continue to do so. You know who you are, my Vigos. In closing, I gave my word during my initial job interview that I'd accomplished several things while in Lawrence County. I've run a lean and mean budget that was transparent and responsible for the Lawrence County taxpayer. Bring a sense of integrity and sound leadership, and most importantly, build a heck of a team. I think I've done most of these and that's up for debate, but our team means everything to me. Most may not realize it, but I helped do this based on trust in each other. Letting people naturally be the leaders that they really are, helping them understand that. And finally realizing the love that we just simply share for each other. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve as your administrator here in Lawrence County. And this isn't a goodbye, it's just a see you soon. I want to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity and want to share that I love all of you. Thank you.
Before we adjourn, we do have another meeting right after this, and believe it or not, this was easy. When I entertain a motion to adjourn, we will return and convene our next meeting at seven thirty to give us just a minute to have a bio break. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Seven zero, this motion, this meeting.